A to elect moderator for a one-year term ending 2025.
I nominate Kelly Echrau.
Second.
We have a nomination for Kelly. Raise your hand, she's right here, anybody might want to know who she is?
Second.
Anybody else want to throw their hat in the ring?
Move the nomination cease.
I second it.
If there's no objection, we'll close nominations. All in favor of Kelly as the moderator, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not me, David is over.
I second it.
Yes, I'm going to say that it's so much fun being moderator for 15 years.
All right.
Waiting adjourned.
All right, we have more business to attend to. Just so you all know, my name is Kelly Echrau, so as we move through the meeting, be aware, my name is Kelly, and as we go through, I will also ask for names because I don't know everybody's name. As we move forward. B, we're going to move on to B. So the next election that we have here is to elect a select person for a three-year term ending 2027. This does need to be done by a paper ballot. We're prepared with a paper ballot, do we have anybody opening the nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mike Aramo.
Mike Aramo, okay. Robin seconds? Any other nominations?
Nomination cease.
Nomination cease.
I move not to close nominations.
Second.
All right.
We don't need a paper ballot.
I move that Cheryl writes one paper ballot, we can't do that for this? We have to actually get them?
No, if it's unopposed, you don't have to do it.
If it's unopposed, there's only one person running, we don't have to do it.
We have to do a voice, we have to have a voice vote. And then we can file one paper ballot for.
All those in favor of the nomination?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mike Aramo, it's elect worth it. To elect a second honoree for a three-year term ending 2027. Any, anybody move?
Who is that, who is that person?
Robin is at the end of her term.
Does she want to continue?
Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Robin.
Nominate Robin? So we have a nomination, a second for Robin? Any opposed?
I do know that Robin would welcome if someone else wanted to do it, I'm just saying that on her behalf.
Who seconded that?
I.
Okay. Sorry, any other nominations on the floor?
I'm moving on, nomination cease.
Okay, any second?
I second it.
So Robin has been elected, oh, we have to, it's a paper ballot, all those in favor of Robin?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Robin Hagerman, three-year term. All right. The next point of business is D, to elect a first constable for a two-year term ending 2026. Any nominations for constable?
I nominate Michael Lyle.
Michael Lyle?
I second.
Seconded by Roger? Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Any further nominations?
It's hard because it looks.
I move the nomination cease.
All right. Let's open it to the floor vote, all of those in favor of Michael Lyle?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Michael Lyle. The next point of business is E, to elect a second constable for a one-year term ending 2025. Any nominations? Or anybody want to move that?
Well, I would nominate the president.
Jeff Lumbras.
Has he done an admirable job?
I think he does, he's kind of a watchdog for over in his little neighborhood over there.
Where his family has lived for generations.
Right.
Just for reference, the second constable that we've elected doesn't have any law enforcement authority, he's just one of the point of contact for us, and he's a great contact, I believe, so. He does a good job as far as I'm concerned.
Since Kelly's not here, I would elect him.
I move nomination cease.
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jeff Lumbras is elected, is the second constable. Point F, to elect a delinquent tax collector for a one-year term ending 2025.
I nominate Nancy Nantum.
I second.
Any other nominations from the floor?
I move the nomination cease.
Second.
All right, from the floor vote, all those in favor of Nancy Nantum?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Nancy Nantum is elected, delinquent tax collector for the next year. Point G, to elect a second cemetery commissioner for a three-year term ending 2027.
That's my term, I believe.
But you were named.
I think it's me.
Do we make the open nominations?
I'd nominate Mark if he wants to.
I second that.
Nomination for Michael Lyle, second. Any other nominations from the floor? Any motions to cease nomination?
Some would, second.
All right. Floor vote, all those in favor of Michael Lyle is the second cemetery commissioner for a three-year term ending 2027. See aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Michael Lyle. All right. Okay, a quick point of business, I just wanted to, as we opened up the meeting, we went directly to the elections of town offices, but I do want to just kind of put some points of order into the meeting. So first off, again, to assure you all know me, I'm taking over for Roger, my name is Kelly. I'm pleased to be the new moderator for the town. According to state law, we are governed by Robert's rules within our meetings, but there are a few things within Vermont state law that also are important to our meetings. First of all, only more than articles will be addressed during the meeting. Once an article is decided whether or not it's up or down, it cannot be reconsidered after the assembly has taken up work on another article. And also, while Robert's rules require a majority vote with a paper ballot as we go through, it does request for people to request a paper ballot if that is so needed, if that is a concern, raised a concern, and I would repeat to you, work with that. Can I see by show of hands, anybody in the room who's not a registered voter in the town of Granville? All right, anybody who's not a registered voter, just please understand, we cannot have you vote on any of the articles that we're assessing or addressing tonight. And we are going to move.
Do you want to allow the state reps to sit first to talk?
Sure, if we have anybody here, do we have any non-voters, anybody who's representing the state that might want to address before we start?
I was just about to bring you a note. I'm Senator Ruth Hardy, and I'd love to get an updated people's way back.
Okay, sure.
You have the best backdrop.
It's great, it's like you're in the theater, I love it. I don't know where to stand.
You can stand right here. Right here. That's fine.
That's good. Stand in front of us.
You're the one talking.
Thank you, hi everyone, thank you Ms. Moderator, and I'm Senator Ruth Hardy, I'm one of the two state senators, hi, that represent me here in the Addison District. And I am trying to attend the town meetings in this corner of my district, I was at Hancock this morning, Rochester last night, so here I am in Granville, and thank you for allowing me to speak and for having me at your meeting. I wanted to give you a little update on what we're doing in the legislature, and I'm happy to answer questions if there's time, or I can just hang out in the back if people want to chat in the hallway. But at the beginning of the session, we had three big priorities that we wanted to try to address. Housing, continuing to put funding into housing, and also do regulatory reform to allow for more housing to be built, especially in town centers. And there are several committees that are working on housing, I am not on any of the housing committees, but there are still several committees working on housing, and I can give you a little bit of information on that if you want. Also, public safety, and public safety can be defined in various ways depending on where you live. Public safety here in Granville is probably very different than public safety conversations in Burlington, but our judiciary committees are working on a variety of sort of criminal justice reform issues and public safety, more broadly speaking, issues. And then the third one is recovery and resilience in the face of flooding. And that is obviously, a lot of towns were really impacted last year, in July in particular, but also in August and in December with flooding around the state. So those were our three priorities at the beginning of the session. Fortunately, school funding issues have kind of reared their ugly head, and that has sort of taken some of our time as well. But in the Senate, we serve on two committees, and I serve on the Health and Welfare Committee that's been doing a variety of bills, and one of the things that we're going to be turning our attention to right now is the opioid epidemic, and trying to figure out more ways to really address that head-on. I also chair the Government Operations Committee, and that's the committee that I wanted to give you a little bit more information on. We have been doing a bill called, about the government response to flooding and natural disasters. And a lot of what's in the bill is really how can government be more effective at preventing and responding and recovering from flooding or other natural disasters. And includes things like making sure that our first responders are well-prepared, well-trained. I see we have at least one first responder, probably several in the room, I saw an ambulance on my way here. Pardon me?
Two of them left.
Two of them left because of the ambulance, yeah. And included in first responders in our bill are public works employees, because during flooding, a lot of times the water system employees are the first people on the scene. I'm wanting to make sure that they are in the loop, and they're included in the planning and in the training, and also in the benefits that first responders get should there be an unfortunate tragedy or death relating to a first responder during a natural disaster. We also include provisions to improve and expand our first alert and 911 system, to make sure that everybody is in that system, and that it also translates for people who are deaf or hard of hearing, or don't have English as their first language. So making sure our, you know, our response systems are working better. Evacuation routes, shelters, a lot of different things that we had to unfortunately employ last year. There's also a grant program for municipalities to apply for to improve their infrastructure to prevent future flooding. So there are a number of things in that bill really related to our government response. The other thing that our committee is focused on is updating our open meeting law. So as you know, all public bodies, your select board and others, have to follow open meeting law to make sure that you all have access to those meetings to participate and to watch what your elected officials are doing. During the pandemic, we allowed those bodies to meet fully remotely, and that expires at the end of June. So we're trying to update that to provide a little bit more flexibility for some of those boards to continue to meet remotely, but for the main boards, including select boards, to still have to meet in person so that people have a place to go to watch those meetings. And even if some of them are, some of the people are participating remotely, there's still an in-person location. That came after a lot of testimony, we heard from select boards and school boards and people from all over the state about it, and really came to a compromise that we think everybody can live with, there are a lot of towns, including possibly Granville, that doesn't have very good internet. So having all the meetings remotely was really hard for people.
We have great internet, but there was some talk about requiring us to have remote access?
That is not.
It's not going to happen. That would be horrible for all our public bodies to.
Yes, we heard that from a lot of people, I can tell you, the Vermont League of Cities and towns did their job well. We heard from a lot of towns, we got testimony actually from your neighbors in Hancock and Rochester about that as well.
I said I know them too, yeah.
There was a moment where we were considering requiring hybrid, but we backed off on that, but you still have to have an in-person location.
Well, we do, and if somebody wants to call in, or somebody, you know, with the snowstorm, we certainly allow that, but we do not have remote access for our meetings.
Right, exactly, you won't have to, unless somebody requests wanting to call in, you have to accommodate them to do that. So that's basically, sounds like you're doing what we are going to ask you to do.
If we needed a great big Zoom in the whole vineyards.
You don't need that.
Every public meeting would have to go by that, that would be a burden.
Yes, we heard that loud and clear, so we got you.
Thank you.
So those are two of the big bills that we worked on, and then I just wanted to touch on school funding, because I'm sure you've all heard, or many of you have heard about the possibility of large tax increases. You guys are in sort of a different position, because first of all, your vote, I believe, is in May. You're with Hancock and Granville are in the school district together, right? So there's a little bit more time for your school district to prepare. And second, because you're a tuition-only district, you don't have a lot of flexibility, you sort of have to pay whatever the tuition is, unfortunately. But what we passed a bill a couple weeks ago that removes an unintended consequence of a bill that we passed a few years ago that was making school districts sort of add more to their budgets, and raising it up a little bit more. We've told them they need to back down, and a lot of school districts have. So that has decreased the tax, the potential tax increase somewhat, and that we're going to continue to work on it. So hopefully by the time you all vote on your budget, I'll have more good news for you. But we know it's a huge issue, we know that it's something that we have to continue working on. It's sort of a perfect storm with inflation and the cost of health insurance and the federal funding drying up for schools, but the need still being there. And the property value situation and the common level of appraisal being kind of off kilter because of the pandemic. So just wanted you to know, we're continuing to work on it, and what we did a couple weeks ago did help lower the potential tax increase. That's what I got for now, if you want, I can answer questions, or I can just hang out in the back for a few minutes in case anyone wants to come and talk to me.
Sure, give a couple minutes, if anybody has any questions? If not, thank you Ms. Hardy for.
You're welcome.
Thank you all, and I hope you have a great meeting, thanks everyone, and please reach out to me if you have questions.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who's here that? With that, we're going to move on to Article 2. And that is. This is a select board report, to hear that and act upon the same, and for that, does anybody?
I'd like to move Article 2 to the floor.
Any second. Select board?
I wasn't the senator for Trump tonight, we usually get a rep that comes from over in Randolph, but it's great to have a senator out there. Last time we had a county senator.
It's great.
Thank you.
Well, it's my pleasure, it was really an honor to be here, thank you so much, and I'm going to take a picture because you look so weird up there.
We don't allow it.
Thank you, everybody, happy town meeting.
And I want to thank Rachel for three years being on the select board, and certainly Roger for his 200 years of. We're still one of the smaller towns in the state with under 300 people. We rely on all contractors to do everything, you know, our only paid people are our town clerk and treasurer. You know, we have no real paid kind of staffing, all our road stuff, and we'll get into that just a little bit. But I really want to thank the contractors that are local that help us out with all the work that we do, that we have to do. Two rivers out of Queachie Regional Commission is the local regional planning commission, and they help us both on municipal and road work with grants and getting our requests for proposals out, contracts and all, so they're very helpful. This building, I think, is finally pretty well stabilized for quite a while. We did the steeple a couple years ago, and that should last us another 40 or 50 years with some painting that'll be required. This summer, we had all, both upstairs and downstairs windows have all been redone. We had a grant from the historic preservation, they've got storms on them all now, and I think we're finally airtight, and the envelope of this building should last for a while. We are bound by being on the National Historic Register, and so that's quite a few complications and requirements when we do this stuff. We're in the midst of getting grants for handicap accessibility, this building does not conform to handicap accessibility requirements. The front door and the stoop needs to be redone, if we ever want to use upstairs, it needs to have some kind of accessibility, either through an elevator, a chair rail, or something. And we're doing a complete overview of what really needs to be done for handicap accessibility. Hopefully, we'll get most of that paid for with grants. The town clerk and treasurer got new computers this year, and you know, that was paid through ARPA funds, which are the pandemic relief money that was given to the state and the towns. And we'll get a little bit more on how we're spending some of that money in just a few too. The fire department needs the buildings down there, we're looking at trying to find some grant money to put water and sewer in there. It's tough to have a public building without a bathroom, and so that's ongoing. And again, we're looking for grants to help us with that, and stay tuned for that. We're really lucky to have two meeting places that people can access. This building right here for parties or weddings or whatever, it's open for residents to rent it. And also the corner school, which has been renovated and has wifi and a fence that, you know, can be held there. So that's another great place to hold events. The select board report is on page 15, we can always use volunteers, we need so many more people out of our 300 people in town. You know, it's tough to find people to fill positions and help us out. We've got 16 miles of Class 3 dirt roads, and they're pretty muddy right now. I am hopeful that this being our third mud season, it's only the beginning of March, that maybe we're beyond the worst. I think the frost is getting out of the road, there's a nice hole that just opened up on Maston Hill. So be careful, you'll see cones there, and we'll get that attended to tomorrow, I hope. But when we had major problems in December with mud, you know, and try to do as best we can trying to get trying to get repairs and stone and whatever's needed, I want to give a big shout-out that we have people plowing our roads this winter, done a great job, and you know, we're in a three-year contract. The price obviously did go up, but we're in a three-year fixed contract on that, and I think that's going to be, Shane Elwell's done a great job, and you know, unfortunately, we didn't get a whole lot of snow, or fortunately, we didn't get a lot of snow, I don't know whichever side you're on with that, but I don't think we're over with that yet anyway, being the first week in March. We follow the town's procurement policy, we go out to bid, with most, a lot of the work we do is with state grants that we get, and accounting is paramount to make sure that we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed. We have a no-match grant from FEMA in the state to take out dangerous trees, they call them, if they're on the side of the road, you'll see some orange blazing on these trees, we were hoping to get that done before winter. But these are trees that are right in the road, either block a right of way, or a sight distance, or they're actually right in the road. So hopefully, we'll get those taken out this spring. You know, we do general maintenance all the time, grading the roads, usually, you know, it used to be like twice a year, now it seems three or four times, we've got to go out and grade it. The gravel pit here in town, we're still hoping to get gravel out of that pit, but we've had to truck gravel over from Middlebury, and that adds time and expense to doing all of that. The Hanley Road, which is over in East Granville, which is part of us, I don't think anybody from East Granville is here tonight, but all 20 or so people that live over there, that's in a flood plain, they get flooded bad. We've met with the river guy over there and trying to come up with a, again, trying to get grants to help reduce the flooding that's there. Hanley Road's about a half a mile, not even a half a mile long, but it comes right up across the railroad tracks under Route 12A, and it's a pretty dangerous spot, so that road has to be maintained also. The, we still struggle sometimes with some of our visitors, Airbnbs, and just people coming from down south that don't have cars that are good for our back roads even in the best of times, but not much we can do about that. The Class 4 roads, we, our roads go up into the national forest. One of, big thank you to VAS that built two bridges last summer, so that now Kennedy Road, you can go all the way up to the government road, and it's all connected, whereas until they put those couple of bridges in, you couldn't get through. So, and the town goes all the way up to the government road. If you ever have any questions on other roads, or you, you know, we'd love to have people go out and help clean out their ditches in front of the yards and keep the culverts flowing, and it's always a challenge, you know, for us to do that, because like I said, you know, it's pretty much all contractors. And the only other thing I want to leave with is that we are going out to contract, and we're going to pave, repave our paved roads, and we're going to add 100 feet onto the bottom of puddle duct North Hollow, where it comes out at 100. So that should improve it greatly, we're going to be paying for that, using some ARPA money and some capital road project money that's been carried over over the years, so we should be in good shape for that. Richard?
Yeah, amongst all this turmoil we're having with roads, I'd like to report a tremendous success. Last year, you had you and Kenny did a small section of road in front of Judy Wood's house on North Hollow Road. I don't know, 50, 75, 100 yards, that was one of the worst spots on that road. I know because I personally graded it myself for three years in order to get out, and that is the only way, it would be terrible rut. So you picked a really bad spot. That is perfect, there's not a single pothole, rut, or anything in that section. So you've demonstrated something that really works. I don't think I have to say much more.
Thank you for that.
Can you explain this? Or we're not at this point yet.
We're not at that point yet, but...
But I actually just wanted to also say that I wanted to commend Rachel Begori for her service as a select board member.
Thank you.
Give it back.
I'll be back with my gift for your own. Yeah.
Are there any other points of discussion related to this select board report? All right. Would it... Before, okay, move on to Article 3 at this point.
I'd like to move Article 3 to the floor. Second motion.
All right. Article 3 is on the floor. And Article 3 is that the town of Granville goes to accept a budget of $405,886 to meet expenses and liabilities of the town, and off the rest, the select board has got a tax break sufficient to provide the same. And with that, discussion? Now I'll ask, what is this? Yes, yes. To answer what that is, I'm going to take off my moderator hat for a moment and put on my auditorer hat. On your chairs, you will see a report, which is an amended report to reflect the actual year-end P and L statement for the town. There was an error in our system with the new report that was printed and published in our town report for the year. So pages 21 through 23 in the town report, this is to amend that report to have the correct information. There were some trial adjusted entries that were made that affected the report that was in here, and just to be completely honest, it was just an error. The actual report is reflected on your... And this is what's in there. From the audit perspective, myself, Robin, and Roger audited the books this past year for 22... Or for 23, 24... For 22, 23, and fiscal year ending 22, 23, we did not find anything significantly different from this report, and the adjustments, the things that looked different between the report that's on your chair and that we've updated online as well, and what's in the town report, was reflected in the actual monthly statements. So honestly, this is just a correction. Yes?
Look, I'm really proud of you. East Granville residents.
All right. Thank you.
I asked, I don't ask questions, I don't...
They're not dumb questions.
So the first, I got a question. So the first one, as I'm looking at your, that one new audited P and L, it looks like you want to make a real difference, is the fact that they're now office outside audit that wasn't budgeted yet. How often do you normally vote for audits?
We had that budget just for that year. So that was the first year that we'd had an outside audit in many years, and it's something we will probably do on a routine basis. We don't have it scheduled.
We decided to do a formal audit when our longtime treasurer, Kathy Werner, retired, and we had a new treasurer come in mid-year, so that's why we paid that money to have the full audit done.
I mean, I'm all for audits, I'm just wondering why we're...
And it's not... To my liking, it's not budgeted for the next...
No, we're going to go with that crap pot local audit that they've done a great job.
Moderator hats back on. Is there any other questions?
I had another one on the... And I hope this doesn't cause a big problem, but the... The right page. Yeah, here we go. Page 18? I don't think the math is right.
What page?
Page 18, the total should be...
The highest one is it?
406 and $6, all 520 bucks. Which comes from line... Page 16, line 50, 80 for website maintenance.
Page 16?
16 and a line 50, 80. The total for the fiscal year of just coming fiscal year could be $160, not $150. And then on line 90...
Oh, yeah, I see that.
90, let's see. Yeah, 90, 20. The cemetery mowing?
Website maintenance.
3,500 and 13, 60 is 48, 60, not 47, 60, so that's $110 all. Those are the only two I saw. I think we found our next shot.
If you're willing to...
Well, I did do business. I did the folks at DYCC. And I was, again, I guess I was curious about the buildings and grounds, but the only thing that had really sizable increases, like cemetery mowing and buildings and grounds mowing, they're up like 40%. I'm sure there's a story, I just don't know.
We had to go out to bid again, and that's what came in that. But we are into that budget right now, so I wasn't going to go through it line by line, but thank you for pointing that out. I'm a little embarrassed that we have some spreadsheet errors in there, but at least it's not huge, but... So if you look through... Go ahead, Roger.
Well, I'm just concerned that he pointed out some small errors. How would we go through in the proposed budget in check if there are larger errors?
Well, he's on the proposed budget, yeah.
We're on the proposed budget, yeah. But I'm saying for this, I mean, there's a budget that will begin, you know, July 1st.
But I think it's important to remember, everybody, that a budget is the best guess of what we're going to spend on each line item. They are not etched and granted as some people might think, and at the end of the year, some things will be over and some things will be under. If it's a municipal, if it's a municipal item, then it goes back to the tax base if it's over, and if it is under, then it gets carried forward to the next year. Roads get dedicated as we vote every year to put into a capital fund, so that whatever is either plus or minus on the roads ends up in the road capital account. And these are all done through Excel, and I'm surprised that we've got some errors. I've looked these over pretty closely, I didn't catch it. I think what we... We can make that, those couple of adjustments right now and have a different bottom-line vote, or we can leave the bottom-line vote as it was warned. I'm not sure what we should do at that point.
I think if we make an adjustment to what wasn't warned, we're limited on about the percentage off that we could be, so it would have to be de minimis, otherwise we can only address the one article.
The question I have is, is the error in the final column proposed, or is it in the add subtract column? So the error is just that 144 versus, you know, which way is the math wrong?
It's going across into the proposed budget. So we're right now off by less than $200.
Yeah, it's less than $200.
$120.
Is it in our... Is it in the favor of a lower...
It's more.
It's more.
But I agree. Budgets are just a guide. It's not, this is not a legal thing.
Well, thank you for coming to East Granville. And you're going to be voted on next time. We need help.
Hi. I was just wondering, it pertains to this because of it's a line item. The, in our appropriations, the Corner School has asked for $1,000 in the regular budget, but then Article 7 is asking us to vote on whether they're going to become a tax-free building in town, which is around $500 to $600, depending on how much more improvement happens to it as to what can be taxed on. So that would be, that we would be giving $1500 to $1600 in... Just getting that aware of when that vote comes that it's already been given money in this vote.
Can I ask that question?
Sure.
So first of all, we've always been tax-free, and in fact, we are final on C3. We don't actually have to come to the town, I need to ask for it. So that's, that has always been true. Secondly, really glad you brought up...
Why are you asking?
I don't know. I don't know why it keeps coming up every couple of years, because it isn't actually necessary, but... But the second thing is, the reason that we increased it this year, and you can read about it on page 47, maybe? The Corner School, yeah, 44. We are finally at a point where we're able to offer some real programming. And last year, when we talked about this at town meeting, it was really, a question came from the floor if $500 is in fact enough money for what we are trying to do, and we didn't raise it at that point. But this year, we came to, we're coming to the town to say, in fact, our operating expenses just for like utilities is about $1,200. The town has been very generous. We really appreciate that people have supported the Corner School. We've gotten in the last, since 2019, a lot of grant money to improve the facility. I want to point out that there is a handout back there with a schedule of programming that we're hoping to run this summer. So we're really trying to take the Corner School into a real community builder. So the extra $500 will be going towards that new programming and also to help offset that $1,200 cost.
I really don't want the appropriation number at all.
Yeah, no, no. I just...
Why were...
No, but I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the tax thing, because it has always been that way. We've been a nonprofit since the beginning.
Next, what is your name?
Marilyn.
Marilyn?
Yeah, I didn't go to town meeting last year, but I think last year, the Corner School Resource Center asking for the $500 was a warning article. But this year, it's a budget line item.
We just decided to put in one with all the other donations that we make as a town. So we didn't have a separate warning article this year for that. Roger?
Yeah, I'll just speak on behalf of the Corner School. I'm the president of the board of directors, and we did encourage the select board to have it as a regular line item. And I'm always curious to know, does anybody here object to the mission of the Corner School? Or is something we could do differently?
I think we should invest in a fence.
Mud splatter down?
Yeah, right.
Because we're really open for anyone who wants to come by and take a look at what's been done. We've been working on that building for almost 14 years. Cheryl was the selectman when we transferred it from the town to the nonprofit.
For a dollar?
I have a picture of Cheryl holding the dollar.
Do you plan on...
So I would just say to anyone here who has any kind of idea for how we can go forward or any skeptical opinions, please let us know.
Do you plan on being open more often or having more than...
Yeah, please, please do take a look at that handout, and we are getting to the point where we may be able to be open in the winter, but it's still very expensive to heat that building in the winter.
With a heat pump?
We have a heat pump.
We have one heat pump with two heads. The main room is not well insulated at the moment, but we got a grant from the Council on the Arts to put storm windows in this summer, and then we'll work on replacing the tin to the roof. Once we do that, then we can continue insulating the walls, but, you know, we have to... Most of our funds come from the Division of Historic Preservation, our matching grants or the Preservation Trust.
But we do plan to be open, you know, May through October this year, and maybe if it's warmer in there because of the storm windows, we might be able to be open a little while.
Will it be regular hours or just for when you have the presentation and the functions?
It's a completely volatile organization, so I suspect for the near future, it will be what, you know, but...
But you have Wi-Fi, so...
We have free Wi-Fi, and you can access it just by sitting right out in front of the building in your car if you want to. Or if you want to be inside the building, you just have to get in touch with any of us from the Corner School will let you in. And it's great high-speed internet, and it's there for the benefit of the community. Which part of that $1,000 is going to help offset?
Any further discussions?
Good job.
My name is Diana. I had a question about winter roads. Your Sean Elwells, they fantastic job, and I think everyone's really happy. But the increase from $50,000 to $6,800 is, it's a 36% increase over the current year budget. Is that written into the three-year contract from the get-go?
Stay the same for three years. There's no escalating clause in it or anything. And we did go out and bid on that, and that was the low bid, and, you know, I think we were probably getting a deal at $50,000, you know, and we were not getting the quality that we're getting this year.
So what, for 22, 23, it was $50,000?
This is his first winter, so it's this year.
So before this, it wasn't, yeah.
So that's the biggest increase in our budget. It was $18,000 on our, I'm sorry, yeah, $18,000 increase on that winter contract, six-month contract, from the first snow to the last snow, to take down all the trees when they come down. You know, he's responsible for sanding and keeping the snow winged back, which has been better than I've ever seen it before. I think because the snow now is mostly in the ditches, then we'll probably have a little relief from a real bad mud season, but, you know, we're right in the midst right now, so it's a little early. And sweeping up the sand at the end of the season, too, isn't that...
Okay, any further discussion in the back?
There's not many discussions. The bowling poles are going to close in 12 minutes.
Great. We'll just call in five minutes to see if anybody's still leaving. So we'll meet then.
Good. So any other questions on the budget? I think we hit the highlights on the... We try to keep it as close as we can to this year's budget, the big, we talked about mowing and the plowing are the biggest differences.
I got a question on the, let's see, item, the sand in the gravel. On the roads.
15?
18.
Okay. Gravel, you have $50,000 in there?
Yep.
Item 52020?
Yep.
I've been asking the question probably for almost two years, that the bull mill owes $12,000, $15,000 in gravel, and I don't understand why we don't ask for it and or else reduce, get the money, and so we can get a tax break on some of this stuff.
Well, go ahead, Ken. You want to talk about that, the gravel? That we will get the gravel out of that pit?
It's the same story. We're going to get the gravel out of that pit. It's been taking some time to, they're working on getting our Act 250 permit. However, we're going to get the gravel out of there, whether or not they have the Act 250 permit, and it's coming this spring. We'll just have to get a little bit bigger pile so that the guy that comes in and crushes it will actually come down and crush it, and then we can take it out.
Wouldn't that be illegal to take gravel when you don't have the permit?
We had a...
Especially with all the flooding that happens throughout the area.
Especially with all the flooding that happens throughout the area?
I don't like it any more than you do. But we need to, we need to get some closure on that part of it. And it's, I don't know why it's taking the time to get the permit and it shouldn't take this long.
I looked on the Act 250 site and there's a lot to do about well water, engineering and all that stuff. Wouldn't it be easier just to get the money from the contractor?
The, the problem, well, I had had the conversation with Jeff about that. And if it doesn't come to fruition, then we will get the money. And if not.
It's been going on for almost two years.
Well, you know, there's talk that there could be up to half a million yards of gravel still there. And hopefully he'll get his permit together and we'll be able to get our gravel locally. It's less expensive locally and certainly a lot less environmental impact and having all the trucking going across one-twenty-five to Middlebury or another direction. So we're trying to be patient with them, you know, and, but Ken just said, we will get that gravel this year, so it's going to be a wash.
It doubles the cost of a truckload of gravel to go and get in Middlebury. Or.
We could do it for two and a half hours.
Right, the trucking costs and, you know, the diesel speed and everything else, you know. So we'd like to keep it local if we can, you know. We're not involved in the permitting problem, but hopefully that gets resolved. And we will get our seven hundred or eight hundred yards this spring.
I don't know. Say, do you want to turn off our stormwater rain path when we're no longer a manufacturing place? They decided to do that, but we did not decide to do that. They decided to do it. And now we have to go through the whole process again to get it back on, to get the grant to go back because the building is still there even though it's not being used as a manufacturing place anymore. And it's not something that we asked for them to do. It's something that they did on their own and now they want us to pay for it all over again to get it back. So he's working, he's working on that and trying to get it to go through. It's a state regulatory thing and that's why it's happening. And we can get you a check and you can sue them somewhere else.
We did do some work down there to help implement that this summer.
All right, are there any other questions on our budget?
Okay, anybody move to?
I'd like to move the question.
A question?
Same.
All right, all those in favor of adopting the budget? As stated.
Usually you have to say the number.
Four thousand and five, four hundred and five.
Just a point, Ward, you should reread the article.
The whole article, okay.
Yeah, and then, and then ask for the.
Shall the town of Granville vote to accept the budget of four hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars to meet expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize the select board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same? Who go to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we move over to Article Three. And next, I will see if anybody will, we are going to take a recess. So anybody move to take a recess for fifteen minutes?
Move to recess?
Great, second. Okay, fifteen minute recess.
So people can go and vote and we can shut down the machine?
Snacks, stuff in the restroom area?
Nothing about that one.
You were so, so.
Exactly, it's like salt pool, mineral, has a lot of house springs.
Just some little stickers.
Can you give me one more minute?
That's a good idea.
Okay, we're out of the ground here. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back to order. Next, should I do that to? We're going to move to Article, we're going to move on to the next article, which is Article Four. Shall the town of Granville vote to authorize the treasurer to apply the surplus remaining from the highway budget current fiscal year into the highway capital investment fund? Any second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? No discussion?
I think as we mentioned earlier, that this and one other budget maybe have, can have pluses or minuses that they'll, they can be carried over and run in account. Is it typical to have a couple of dollars in this?
The highway, the highway funds have to stay dedicated to highway. And municipal can be used either highway or municipal, although we keep it pretty well separated. The municipal budget, if there's a surplus or a deficit, it gets carried forward to the next year. The highway goes into a separate capital fund, which we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital funds in there now. And a lot of that is due to not being able to get the gravel over the years. We will be trucking it if we have to this summer because we really need to get gravel on the roads. The seven hundred yards that are owed is just a small amount of gravel that we need for our roads, so.
A tenth. A tenth.
A tenth. Not going to do it all in one year, buddy.
Any other questions, any questions?
Call the question.
Call the question.
Say, move to vote? Okay, all those in favor of adopting Article Four?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'd like to move Article Five.
Great. Okay, Article Five, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the highway capital investment fund in the amount of six thousand dollars for the purpose of repaving town roads? Anybody move to?
How much? How much is in that capital investment fund currently?
That, that will be thirty-six thousand dollars as of July first.
Including this six thousand?
The paving of the roads, the contract that we have is for about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do the paving. What's that?
Close to one.
Close to one forty.
One forty.
Okay, we did get four bids for that, which was amazing. That was the low bid, Pike Industries is going to be doing it, which the big payers in the state of Vermont sort of surprised that they bid on it. But they were also the low bidder. They will get that done. And this article would just help us pay for the paving. The rest of the money that we need for paving will come out of ARPA money, the pandemic relief money and our capital surplus in the highway department, the highway.
One more question. How much is left of the ARPA funds at this point in time?
Right now, we have about ninety thousand dollars in ARPA funds. We bought the computers for the office out of the ARPA funds. I'm hoping that we can use some of that money for MAF for our handicap accessibility project. But I think we have to have those ARPA funds committed this year. So if we, I don't know how fast this handicap accessibility granting is going to go. But if not, we'll use it either for, we can use it for other budget items, to offset budget items, or we can use it to help us pave the roads.
That's the point.
But there won't be any impact on taxpayers.
And is that by July one, would you say this year?
By the end of the year, by December third, first.
December third.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
And those ARPA rules have changed all throughout. So, I mean, it's been a nightmare. It's nice the federal government gave this little town ninety thousand dollars. You know, they gave a lot more based on population. And, you know, that money was very tightly scrutinized when we first got it a couple of years ago, that you can only do this or that with it. Now they've opened it up that you can offset budget items and other issues with the federal money. But you got to use it by the end of this calendar year or you lose it because back to the feds.
I have a question about the overall capital. Is that entirely for paving or is that also for gravel?
That, the main part of what we've had to carry forward over the last couple of years is the gravel. That we've been remiss on putting gravel down on our roads and doing, we've been doing culvert work and we've been doing sections of roads, but our roads need, like Ken would say, how many thousand yards?
About eight.
Eight thousand yards, he says, okay, so.
So that part is for paving, paving ends up?
Right, right. Dedicated to roads.
We did a calculation a few years ago to figure out how much gravel per year that would take to maintain the road onto a steady maintenance program. And that was about thirty-two hundred yards for the amount of miles of roads that we have. And we've been going backwards for the last few years, so we need to get caught back up.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a question.
So this is my last ARPA question. And is the review of the select board to determine how those monies are used? Do you have to bring that to us at all? It's completely up to you.
It's up to the select board.
Is there a possibility that, like, do we have to, like, read the agenda for the select board minutes in order for us to know when those are being allocated? Because it's a lot of money and a lot of people in town who would be interested.
We've had ARPA on our select board agenda every meeting. So, you know, we've been looking to.
But you haven't dispersed a lot of it yet.
The only thing with it's been dispersed out of it is town computers.
Yeah, we've been talking about it since summer about potentially using it for the AD accessibility because it seems like that's something that at this point should, should be here. Other bigger towns I know have formed like subcommittees with citizens and having it almost like in a grant style, like a simple formulated form. That's for hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know, you know, with the ninety thousand bucks, I, I would.
With the overall budget of about four hundred thousand dollars, so that's about a quarter of our budget. It seems like it would be something that the town would want.
Yeah, I would love if people brought other, I mean, I know I'm stepping down, so I can't say much, but I think it would be great for people to chime in and like have backing at meetings of what they really want the ARPA funds to go to. So it's not just three people deciding where that ninety thousand is. Yeah.
Does the ninety have to be spent or just planned to be spent? Because I imagine forming committee and cording on it may be more difficult to have it.
Yeah, I don't.
My understanding, the latest I've heard, is that it has to be committed in contracts by the end of the year. That we can't just say, well, we want to use it for handicap accessibility next year. So, you know, there's, we've had it on our agenda every select board meeting and we've talked about it every select board meeting. And anybody's got better ideas, by all means. There is still time.
Okay, any further discussion on Article Five? Any questions? Call the question and move to move. Call the question.
I'll second that.
All right, Article Five, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the highway capital investment fund in the amount of six thousand dollars for the purpose of repaving town roads? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, so move.
You're the last year to see that for a while.
I think you move Article Six.
We move Article Six, second.
I'll second that.
Article Six, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the municipal building investment fund in the amount of five thousand dollars for the purpose of repainting the municipal complex? It's hard to say, municipal complex. Any discussion on that? Or questions?
Select, any question?
Question, call the question, okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the municipal building investment fund in the amount of five thousand dollars for the purpose of repainting the municipal complex? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is passed.
Like to move Article Seven?
I'll second that.
Article Seven, shall the town of Granville vote to exempt the Corner School Resource Center from property taxes for five fiscal years, beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine? Any discussion on that?
I have to call the question.
Question, sounds good. Okay, moving to vote, shall the town of Granville vote to exempt the Corner School Resource Center from property taxes for five fiscal years, beginning July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine? All of those in favor? Any opposed? All right.
I'll move Article Eight.
Second.
Great. Article Eight, shall the town of Granville vote to authorize property taxes to be paid to the treasurer as provided by law in four equal installments with due dates beginning August fifteenth, November fourteenth, February thirteenth and May fifteenth? Any discussion on that?
I'd like to just ask, just a question to the select board. Could they, dates align a little bit more with the state federal estimated taxes? Or is this kind of like?
I think those dates are set up so that the town clerk's office would be open.
Is that right?
Right, so the town clerk's office would be open and it would be hopefully for.
All right, oh, that's right.
Yeah, school hang with.
Any, any further discussion or questions on that?
Call the question. A second.
Great, Article Eight, shall the town of Granville vote to authorize property taxes to be paid to the treasurer as provided by law in four equal installments with due dates beginning August fifteenth, November fourteenth, February thirteenth and May fifteenth? Move to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is passed. Anybody?
I'll move Article Nine.
Second, great. Article Nine, shall the town of Granville vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of one percent per month or a fraction thereof for the first three months and thereafter one and one-half percent per month or a fraction thereof from the due date of such tax pursuant thirty-two Vermont statute, DSA, fifty-one thirty-six? Any discussion on that? That's right. Call the question, any?
I'll move to call the question.
All right, read that one more time. Shall the town of Granville vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of one percent per month or a fraction thereof for the first three months and thereafter one and one-half percent per month or a fraction thereof from the due date of such tax pursuant thirty-two DSA, fifty-one thirty-six? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is passed. And?
I make a motion to bring Article Ten to the board. I'll second that.
All right, Article Ten, to transact any other business to come before the meeting. Any other business that anybody would like to bring forward?
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm on a lot. I just want to, I want to know, this, you know, it's wonderful to see lots of new, younger faces in town. That's the first thing I want to say. But it's also a little sad to me to not see some of the older faces in town. And I, I. And I, I, I was involved in why we moved this meeting to the time that it now is. But I begin to wonder if we're excluding a lot of the elders in our community who find it hard to come out at dark. And I'm just wondering if that's something we might want to revisit for next town meeting, the, the time of day that we have it. I'm, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. I also miss the days when we used to have a real community supper around town meeting and I, I just, I just want to put that out there that it would be really great to really think of this as a community event, a community event.
Well, we had the supper when we had the school meeting and.
All right, well, I'm all aware. And how much you would call me every year and tell me to bring rolls?
How, how do you, how do we decide?
I think, I think it can be decided when we post a warning next year, time and place.
Right, so we.
I know we used to put it in the warning of the, to have our town meeting next, whenever.
Exactly, we did do.
But I, I don't think that's required anymore.
And if we put out that question now, will people have time who are here to share that? And maybe bring forward ideas over the next?
We've talked about Saturday, we've talked, you know, during the day, but then people work, you know, so there's no real good time.
It's a conundrum, but this is a small, I mean, this is small, this is small.
I heard from people that stayed, weren't coming tonight because of the bud.
The bud?
The bud.
It's Ken's bud. I like my driveway.
Ms. Rogers?
If I could go on this theme or theme up, what about the idea of continuing it with the way we sort of have? If anything, you wanted to maybe try to leave it to say 5:30 to 6 o'clock. But what about we can just some of the younger, more adept people in our community to provide transportation to the older people that maybe don't want to be in the classroom? And, and sort of become our own little ferry service, if you will, to get some of the older people to come to me? If we start at, say, at 5:30, then if we could do something like we did today is find a logical point where we could break and still have some kind of a potluck, you know, gathering that we could give it a timeframe of how long it lasts, maybe half an hour or 45 minutes. It would still avail us of that, that socialization that I think will lack in many, and especially since COVID and all the things that just transpired over the last years. And I'm still managed to be out of here by a reasonable hour, say like 8 o'clock or something like that.
Great, okay.
And we wouldn't have to move.
I just want to thank Cheryl and Nancy for the snack.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
I have a good point that I want to bring up. Before we close the meeting.
Christian, I think, yeah, is a bad.
Christian. Regarding the time of the meetings, because we now vote, I can't make it on a Saturday or, you know, there are lots of workers in the same season and other times, but meeting, meeting is good, you know, 6 o'clock was comfortable, but, you know, I don't think I'd work till 5, up in the Manta River Valley. So I hate to see if it turns into a day meeting and I still only have two-hour meeting or three-hour meeting, depending on when it's on, on the dock date. So it's just the, when it's combined with voting, I would shut down some voting for some people that work during the day or on weekends, so I just would try.
It's a conundrum.
Yeah.
I wanted to personally thank Robert and also for all the help and helping we prepare for this as well as wish you a happy birthday.
Every six years it falls on the coffee table. By 7.
So if you haven't noticed also, those of you who have pets, we are having our annual Randy's clinic. It's March 27th in our usual place, the Hancock Firehouse from 5 to 7. So cats, whatever. And then some of the town clerks, I'm not sure if Cheryl's there or not for sure, be able to register your dogs and pets as well, so just be aware. It's the cheapest way to do it and all vet turds are just shot turds.
Do you want to flee and take stuff too?
Dr. Adams will be there. We've got all this.
And any other points of business that anybody would like to share before we adjourn? All right, well, thank you all, move to vote.
Yeah, I have a question. So there's some discussion about like, so like teenagers coming in and going on local town stuff? I don't know if we want to maybe encourage that to get some younger, younger people started?
We're, we're out of, had that for the first time this year.
Yeah.
16-year-olds.
16-year-olds.
Yeah.
For, for rural.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I think that's going to be something everybody's going to look into over the next year.
All right, any, does anybody move to adjourn?
I'm voting to adjourn.
All right, thank you so much.